Good morning. Oh, come on, there's a lot of energy out there. Let's not quiet down now. Good morning. Thank you, thank you. We appreciate that greatly. May we do a call to order, please? Roll call vote.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Banks?
Here.
Mr. Affler?
Mr. Wild?
Here.
Thank you all for joining us today. This is really cool. But before we get into all the fun, would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for joining us today. This is... This is really neat to see. You talk about the health of an organization with all that we have going on, family and friends and peers and colleagues and mentors and FTIs and everyone else who's here to support our officers, whether it's promotion or special things that they've accomplished. We are so grateful that you're here to support them. And we're just so cool to see all of you out here. So we're going to jump into our meeting, chief. Couple of quick things. So welcome to July. I learned something today. I always thought dog days meant it was just hot and the dogs didn't want to get around and move much. But I learned today, and so I'm sharing trivia since I like it, that, do you know where dog days comes from? Anybody know where that term comes from? If I heard it correctly, the dog star, it's called Sirius, the dog star. And the dog star is the most visible star in the sky from July 10th to August 11th, hence dog days. So for those of you who like trivia, you got something. For those of you don't, I just wasted 10 seconds of your life. But thank you. Hope everyone enjoyed the fourth. The board hopes you, officers in particular, and family got some time off and enjoyed our Independence Day. And for those of you who will be around, there will be two separate meetings. So we're going to take care of this due to the size, take care of the fun stuff, and then we'll take a break. We'll actually end this meeting and then restart another meeting over in the police chambers. So for those of you sticking around, you'll have to move with us. So with that, Commissioner Banks? Commissioner Wild?
I have just one thing I would like to recognize. We had a first responder lose his life yesterday in Boone County, Missouri. He was affecting a water rescue and the Zodiac tipped over. So just again calls to mind the sacrifices that folks make. I don't want to be a downer on such an exciting day, but let's do, remember him and his family, please.
Let's just take a moment, please. Thank you. Sir, thank you for bringing it up. Chief, we're going to make you master of ceremonies for all this fun stuff, if you don't mind. All right, you got to show.
When I walked up here and I saw the crowd, I'm thinking, this is the day we should have charged admission. This would not have worked across the street. So glad we have this large building to do this thing. Good to see all of you here. I've got a few promotions to make. I've got a retirement to announce, and we'll get started. Retired Chief Deputies Chief Flotrick, come on up, sir. Deputy retired, what, on June 10th? Well, after, day last day of work with you was 10. And he started his second job on June 11th. He didn't get much of a break, so he's still working. We worked together for a number of years over at the academy. When I was a captain over there, he was sergeant over at that time. We worked well together. Then when I became acting chief here, he became acting deputy chief. When I became the official chief, he became the actual deputy. And we had a number of great units working together. We had a number of great units working together. He helped me through my agenda quite a bit, quite often in here. So I'm going to miss him. I'm wishing him well on his second job. I have a plaque for your retirement and your deputy in your retirement space.
We can still play golf, though.
Chief, if you don't mind, very quickly. Sir, I apologize to you profusely. I did not recognize you at the last meeting. That's a personal apology to you. Thank you for coming back to cover up my faux pas on behalf of the board. And they'll speak for themselves, as you well know. But we deeply appreciate all that the chief mentioned, your years of service, the lives you've impacted the community. You've improved by being here and all the people you've led. So thank you very, very much.
Well said. Thank you.
Do you have any family with you?
I don't. Just everybody that I've worked with. I appreciate everybody.
Pretty good family.
Good reference.
You know, over the years, I've watched the number of people stand up when they're retired and talk about their time here and kind of how they're going to miss the people, not necessarily the service. And I thought when I got my opportunity, I would say something different. But the truth is, there's really not a lot to say. No, I got a chance to live my dream. Everybody in here that's worked here has been a part of that. I appreciate it. I wish you nothing but the best. It's difficult to do this job right now. I know that, as well as the rest of you. So good luck. Please stay safe. I appreciate everything you've done.
You got time to write all that out?
Yeah.
Some commendations to present. Police Officer Kristen Dowell. Come on up. Kristen, it's yours. Why don't you stand over here to the side?
Okay.
Police Officer John Holman. John? It's yours. Police Officer Angela Ward. Ms. Katie Fowles. They're yours. Nathan Phillips. Captain, hey, you guys come up front.
Commissioners, Chief Gregory, ladies and gentlemen. It's an honor to be up here and help present this award today. Anytime a captain gets to highlight one of their officers, it's a great feeling. Today, I get to brag upon the tire of the two hard workers that they've got. This is a seat platoon of the Bureau of Transit. This is our special ops group. It is composed of three different workout teams. Our SET team, our special enforcement team. We have our precinct detective. And we also have all suits that are assigned to the real-time camera center. What's unique about this group is the way they're able to assist one another in their various units and assignments. Meaning that if one of the SET members is absent due to vacation or a family leave, one of the others may step up. We have to come from the camera center and fill in with the SET team. We've had people from the SET team go in the precinct detective spy. So they work well together as a team. It's just an outstanding group. So today, they're being recognized for the performance that they did in 2023. So we'll start with our SET team. During that time period, they initiated over 2,100 self-initiated investigations that resulted in 250 arrests for drugs, weapons, robberies, assaults, of which 207 warrants were issued for felonies. 214 criminal summonesses were issued. 104 illegally possessed firearms received, resulting in 41 felony firearms warrants being issued. 14 federal indictments for weapons charges. 18 of those firearms were reported stolen and linked to homicides or assaults. And they recovered 350 around drum magazines. One was converted into a fully automatic pistol. Our precinct detective, Detective Holman, also seized five firearms. He did all the tracking of the firearms seized by the team. So altogether, the whole team recovered 108 firearms last year. He is responsible also for all the unsolved crime that happens on MetroLink. And last year, just going by video and pictures of any of the suspects, he was able to do a complete clearance rate, 100% clearance rate of all crimes that occurred in St. Louis County on MetroLink last year. Very commendable. And none of this could be accomplished without the eyes in the real-time camera center. The officers assigned there, Katie and Angela, watch over the officers, report any of the crimes that are coming out, give real-time information on everything that's going on, not only with St. Louis County, but also with Metro and our partners over in Illinois. So great job. Very proud of the work that they've done for the citizens of St. Louis County and the agents of the state. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thanks for your work over there.
Nicely done. Good to see you. Nicely done.
Hey, guys, come this way.
Thank you.
The brain's behind the app.
Anybody out here with you? Anybody came with you? Is that here?
Of course. They call?
Five say, you want to stand up for it, please? You got anyone with you?
Nobody.
Hey, you guys, I've just got a plaque. Lord, don't take pictures of the families outside when we're done here. Who's that girl? Jeffrey Oldenberg? He's not here. Agent Washington? There he is. Agent, that place is yours. And Ollie Christensen? Ollie? Ollie, it's yours. Captain?
Thank you, chief. Governor, the board, chief, ladies and gentlemen, on Valentine's Day this year, right about shift change, about 6:00 a.m., officers were sent to the Wildwood Hotel, which is more or less across the street from our station in downtown Wildwood, for a person, mental illness, in distress. When the officer got there, the guy wouldn't open the door. He was doing some crazy stuff, wanting the officers to park outside their window where he could see them approaching. Just kind of odd request. Holly and Adrian made contact at the door, trying to reassure him, comfort him, calm him down. Went back and forth for an extended period of time. Things were kind of escalating and suddenly smoke started coming up from under the door of the hotel room. Hotel room doors are not easy to kick in. They didn't try that. It doesn't work. So he had set furniture on fire inside the room. They're pleading for him to come out. He eventually does pop out. They quickly took him in custody and took him across the street to the station. They had, he had his dog in there with him, a German Shepherd, I believe. What was it? A pit bull? No, even better. The dog was very cooperative and followed the officers right across the street. There was no issue there. We released the dog. They were watching a family member. So they secured him, but we still had another situation unfolding with a very active fire. Black smoke filled in the hallway and an occupied hotel at 6:00 a.m. Pretty much everybody was asleep. So the chaos ensued, waiting for the fire department to get there and start getting people out the door. So they did a great job. Officer Oldenberg, who retired in April, was supposed to be here. I'm surprised he's not actually. That's Jeff. But they quickly brought the situation into control, under control, got our suspect out of there and worked on the evacuated hotel and getting that under control. The suspect was since charged February with arson. ATF was involved in the investigation with us. And they did a great job. Very kind, patriotic. They weren't expecting that at 6:00 a.m. when they came to work. So there they are. Thank you very much.
Nathan, you guys anybody here with you? Anybody here with you?
Maybe I'll just start. Still not working.
It's on.
Hello, can you hear me?
It's work for the audio for the, when we post it online.
Andrew Kitchell?
Andrew Kitchell? Mason Miller?
Captain Mondale, you still got it?
Thank you, chief. On February 7th this year, about 4:00 a.m., a resident who was out of town was alerted that his home camera had activated. He starts watching his camera and sees that someone was at his home attempting to get into the house. They did not. He contacted us. Officers Miller and Kitchell were the first to respond. When they got there, there's a, they contacted a neighbor who said, hey, there's a car down the street. They found this car parked the wrong direction. The car's running. Nobody around it. So they start doing a canvas. At that point, it was pretty much all hands. So the entire precinct responded on this because we think we have an active burglar. As they're canvassing, they confront the burglar who's coming out of the house, like on TV with the TV. And so they quickly have him in custody. It was kind of a bizarre situation. This individual lived in Wentzville. No ties to our area. No reason for being there. This is, he was actually supposed to be driving to Union, I think. Somehow meandered his way into Wildwood, randomly picked a street, decided he was going to do a burglary, and went to work. His car had bizarre stuff. He was stealing lawn ornaments, flags from people's houses, tools, gasoline, weed eater, just all kinds of miscellaneous stuff. But at one point, he did find the open door of a neighboring residence, got inside, pretty much while people were there sleeping. He was wandering about their house. I think he had himself sunned in the heat. Used their bathroom in their bedroom while the people were sleeping. Tried on and stole their huts and shoes. Just very strange. He was intoxicated at the time, so that must have been his confidence came from. But in the end, they intercepted him and cleared three burglaries, returned over $3,000 for stolen property within that burglary or the multiple burglaries occurred within about 10 or 15 minutes of him being there. Again, very bizarre. Had he taken off, we'd have been at zero as far as trying to figure out who this guy was, you know, he entered through the locked door. So there are quick response to this. Got him in custody. And then the team effort afterwards, there's several wards of excellence that were rewarded related to this incident all so far. The team response to that whole platoon of getting this guy in custody and solving these crimes quickly. So job well done. Thank you.
Very weird.
Congratulations, chief. Anybody here with you?
I have my parents.
Please stand up for her. I want to have some promotions to make. You know, as a chief, one of the best days that I've had is on the day that I fell and my executive command staff elected a lot of people to be promoted. And... Wilder?
Well, you need to have the microphone.
I'll start over again. One of the best days that I have as a police chief, working with my executive command staff, is when we make promotions. And they help me make these promotions. We have a list of good people at every position that we have. And it's a hard job for me to do it all by myself. So they give me the assistance and help me with that. And I have some promotions to make today, and I'll let you know who they are in a second here.
Being promoted to Lieutenant Colonel...
Thank you very much. I brought my wife.
Okay.
Because it rained and they can't play golf, my group from South County...
Thank goodness for the rain.
Ludwig, of course, said he was here for me, but I didn't realize that he was here. Don't give him the mic.
Congratulations.
Being promoted to captain, Captain Danielle Durham.
Thank you. You brought the whole... Thank you very much.
Her first teacher. Congratulations, Captain.
So all of you guys, Danielle Broadway, stand up.
Yeah.
Also being promoted to captain, Shanna Austin-Dorff.
Congratulations, Captain.
I recognize one Austin-Dorff officer.
Yes.
Stand up, please, Bill. Congratulations.
Captain Matthew Pleviak. Captain, anybody here with you?
I have my wife, Tammy.
Please stand up, Tammy. Where are you at?
And my son, Gunner.
Gunner.
Okay, being promoted to lieutenant, Lieutenant John Conrady.
Lieutenant, who's here with you? I brought my daughters, Abigail and Claire. Please stand up.
Being promoted to lieutenant, Lieutenant Justin Nichols. Justin, I know you got some people here with you today.
I do.
Don't stand up.
So I have who we call my second cohort, my beautiful wife, Sneaka, our youngest, Harper, my nephew, Jaden, my daughter, Eliana, Jordan, Naomi, Josh, and Joseph.
Justin, do us...
As well as my BPS family, too, chief.
Just do us a favor, man. Tell us how you and your wife came about the children that you just introduced.
So the last four years, we adopted five kids.
Adopted five kids? Oh, wow. Lieutenant Corey Simons.
Lieutenant, who's here with you?
My wife, Danielle. I can't take it up for her.
Danielle, please stand over here. I got a final story to tell you about the position of lieutenant. So as a sergeant, they nickname around this department as Sarge. That's what they call you, Sarge.
That's what they call you, a Sarge, okay? If you're lieutenant, the short name for lieutenant is Lou. That's what they call you, Lou. So we had a new guy. We hired a guy from Fenton, I believe. He was new. He was just getting broken in. And I met him one night. We were talking. How's things going for you? And he says, fine. Everything's going fine. He said, I just got one problem. I said, what's that? He says, why all the white shirts? All their names are Lou. He didn't realize that we just used that nickname for lieutenant and it just kind of took me when he told me that story. I'll never forget that. Being promoted to sergeant, Daniel Alton.
All right. Congrats, Sergeant.
Who's here with you? Who you got here with you? Alice? Sergeant Justin Perry.
Justin, who you got here with you, Justin?
My wife, Mallory, and my boys, Jacob and Jack.
Mallory?
Sergeant Courtney Robinson.
Courtney, who got here with you?
My wife, Shania.
Shania? And Sergeant Alexander Wagon.
Alexander, who's here with you? I know two for sure. Where? There he is. Sergeant Second Precinct. And your son, Jacob. He gave him away. Commissioner, that's all I have. I bet you guys got a good workout today. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Again, to each and every one of you on behalf of the board, congratulations and/or thank you, and/or both, depending on all your accomplishments, again, to the family, friends, spouses, aunts, uncles, peers, mentors, all the names we've mentioned before, all the different roles you've played in the lives of our officers and our leaders. We are deeply indebted to you for all the support you give them. We know what a difficult job it is, and it is highly dependent on your support. So, thank you. Chief?
Yes.
I was going to do it. I'll blame this on Amy for not putting you on the agenda, okay? Yeah. As I mentioned earlier, Deputy Chief Ludwig retired. Along with the discussion with the board, I announced Deputy Chief Juan Cox as the new Deputy Chief of the St. Louis County Police Department, and he's our man.
That's it again.
All right. That's a good one to conclude on. Not that all the other ones wouldn't have been great, but this was equally good. Again, thank you all for coming. We're going to take a pause, so just hold on a second. We're going to adjourn the meeting, and then we can take our time to get some pictures, I think we heard said earlier.
Yes, families or the outside in the hallway.
All right, in the hallway. The rest of us who have business to transact, we're going to head back over to the police department and do it in our own conference room. So, may we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Amy, roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you all again very, very much.